Twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-three, meeting of the Planning Commission. You'll rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can you do the roll call?
Yes.
Commissioner Bardas?
Here.
Commissioner Dolan?
Here.
Chair Kempner?
Here.
Commissioner Stapp?
Here.
Commissioner Hamame and Commissioner Woods both indicated they were ill and they would not be here this evening.
Okay. Would someone like to make a motion to excuse them?
Motion to excuse Commissioner Hamame and Commissioner?
Woods.
Woods.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Motion to excuse and?
We can hardly hear what you're saying. I'm sorry.
Sure. Um. All right. Approval of the agenda. Does anybody want to make a motion to approve the agenda? Any changes to it?
Motion to approve agenda for September twenty-sixth Planning Commission meeting.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda is approved. Approval of the minutes of the July twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-three meeting. Does anybody have any changes or motions to approve?
Motion to approve meeting minutes from July twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-three.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved. Now we come to communications.
So you had the Michigan Planner in front of you this evening, and there are two separate piles. Each are communications for the public hearing, both public hearings this evening. So there are no communications outside of the public hearings and the Michigan Planner.
Thank you. And citizen comments. So this is the time for items that are not on the agenda. You will have time to address agenda items during the meeting. For any comments, we ask that you come to the podium, state your name and city of residence, and limit your comments to three minutes. The Planning Commission will not engage you in conversation, but will be noting your comments, and will try to address them during discussions. Are there any citizen comments? Okay. Moving on. PSP zero-five-two-three, thirty-two ninety-four, Greenfield. Kristin, would you like to give us a rundown?
I will give you a quick rundown. So in this case, the applicant is proposing a parking area. This is to serve the existing Berkeley urgent care. It includes landscaping and stormwater detention as well as lighting. A reminder that all plans in the Greenfield District do require a public hearing except single-family homes. So that's a little bit unusual, but that is on your agenda as a public hearing this evening, and appropriate notice has been provided for that. The Community Development Department is recommending approval of the plans with the suggestion that the applicant consider a pedestrian connection to the urgent care facility. This is not a requirement, but a suggestion. DPW and Public Safety have also reviewed the plans and are recommending approval. The applicant has also requested that the Planning Commission consider approval of a vinyl fence in lieu of what's typically required, a masonry wall adjacent to the single-family residential home. And they're asking for approval of their site plan this evening.
Thank you. Is the applicant here? Hi. Would you like to tell us a little bit more, or?
Excuse me. Certainly. Dan Winter here on behalf of Greenfield Trust. I believe there are a couple notes from the adjacent property owner as well as the doctor recommending on the vinyl fence specifically. I brought a copy of the plan, which I'm sure you all looked at. I think it's a good plan for purposes of alleviating parking issues that have been going on in that business for some time. It seems they're open quite a few hours, I think probably eighteen hours a day. It seems to be always a lot of traffic. So hoping to request basically a six-car parking lot, and it would be private just for the doctors only that work in this business, which the principal and then for others and then another staff member. In regards to the, what's the word I'm looking for? To have a direct access from the back of the building. We did look at that. However, every room in there is either an exam room or a room that could not use, that we cannot take and reconfigure to be able to put a doorway. So I did speak with the doctors, and they are happy to use the city sidewalk, and then separately, there is a separate sidewalk that goes right up to the front of the building, too. The only other issue that sort of came to my attention in the last twenty days, in this property adjacent, the urgent care, the back area here, which is approximately a hundred feet, the currently is a six-foot required. Masonry wall, however, it is made out of a brick, older brick material. It's a jumbo, like beige, brick. Been unsuccessful in locating that to match it. Of course, we thought we would be able to match that block. It does show on the plan a proposed six-foot-high masonry wall to match existing. I guess I would politely request that we could obviously use still a six-foot masonry product, not the brick, but a, which I believe is acceptable to the city, a split-face block wall with the split-face side facing the neighbor to the rear. But everything else that we went through, I believe, made the Planning Commission, excuse me, the review. We addressed the issues in here as well as photometrics. Should be of no impact to any residential neighbors. Again, this parking lot is strictly private. It will be marked as such. It will not be open for patients of the urgent care, but rather just for the purposes of the doctor. And there will be signs on each side of the drive noting that private parking just for that practice.
Thank you. Do you have any questions for staff or for the applicant?
This is just an employee parking lot?
Yes, sir.
The interlocking handrail barriers, will they be secured in the?
Yes, they will be. So right now, currently, there's a, I guess I'd call it a grass area there. The plan calls for the concrete to be in the parking lot, and then the distance between the edge of the parking lot and the building to be gravel. The reason for doing this is there's quite a bit of mechanical, electrical, condensing units, a transformer, and a other mechanical equipment. So what we were proposing was a stainless steel guard that would be staked into the stone that would prevent that equipment from getting hurt if there was a car backing up too far.
Sure. So in lieu of like a bollard or something, you're proposing that?
Exactly.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay. I'm going to ask you to sit down so I can open the public hearing. I'm going to open the public hearing at seven-oh-eight. Is there anyone from the public who would like to comment on this? Do we need to read into the record the email that we got, or?
You don't need to read it verbatim into the record. I think it would just be appropriate to indicate whether it's in support or against. And then if there's any specific questions you want staff to address from there.
Okay. We did get one here. Oh, and we have?
I think that was to the neighbor to the north.
There was one in the packet as well.
There's one in the packet as well.
It's in support of the vinyl fence?
Yes. It's in the support of the fence. And this one is also in support of the expansion from the doctor. And with that, I will close the public hearing at seven-oh-nine. And I will open it up to our discussion. Anyone care to start?
I, more of an internal thing, and I know we're working on our parking. We currently, correct me if I'm wrong, but we currently do not have any guidelines for the compact car, like requirements as far as length or depth of the parking stalls and the drive aisle?
We do. That's why these spaces have to be signed as compact car, because they don't meet the requirements for a full-size space.
Sure. And does that also allow to go from a twenty-four to a twenty-foot wide aisle?
Yeah. We had that reviewed with HRC, and they felt that that was appropriate, that the cars should be able to make that turn.
Okay.
So the fence is one of the variances that we need to approve ultimately, right?
Right. That's the only waiver to consider as part of this plan.
And then just as an added note, for this as well as the next one, there's only four of us here, so for anything to pass or not pass, it would have to be all four voting the same way.
So I don't have any issue with a fence waiver?
I don't as well.
Me neither.
Yeah. If the neighbor is fine with it, then I'm fine with that as well.
Yeah. Absolutely.
The second note from the staff review was the pedestrian connection. Sounds like it's not feasible from their point of view. So the sidewalk is out front.
And if this is just for staff parking, it's not like there'll be people walking numerous times.
I mean, I didn't have any other issues. I see there's bio-retention rain garden going in in the corner, too, for the runoff, and landscaping all around the parking lot. And essentially, the fence was the only waiver for site plan approval.
Right. In this instance, do we also have to make a finding that the landscape is appropriate? Or?
You, it would be great if you did include that. By your approval of the site plan, it would be an indication that you thought the landscape was appropriate, but it would be nice to include that, too.
All right. There's no more questions or discussions. We could entertain a motion.
Yes. I can propose a motion to approve PSP zero-five-two-three, which is to three-two-nine-four Greenfield Road Parking Lot Expansion, with the waiver for an allowance of a vinyl screen fence in lieu of required masonry screen. And the, we also find that the landscaping meets all the requirements of the ordinance. It's sufficient.
Support.
You call bro?
Yes. Commissioner Dolan?
Yes.
Commissioner Stapp?
Yes.
Commissioner Bardas?
Yes.
Chair Kempner? Motion passes four to zero.
Thank you. Congratulations. And next item on our agenda is PUD oh-one-twenty-three, the Columbia. Would you like to give us an intro for this one?
I will. I'm going to give you an intro that focuses a lot on the PUD and a little bit on the plan, and then Megan Masson Minock from Carlyle-Wartman is here to add any details on the plan itself. And of course, the applicant has a presentation as well. So to begin, this is a proposed PUD. It's on the east side of Coolidge, bordering both Columbia and Cambridge Roads. It's for fifty-seven multiple-family units, with a portion of the building spanning Columbia. And I can bring those plans up. The PUD is intended to offer some flexibility in development standards while maintaining the implementation of the master plan and the goals listed therein. The Planning Commission makes a recommendation to the City Council, who ultimately approves or denies the project. The Planning Commission is also responsible for holding the public hearing, and that has been noticed for this evening. The PUD can be approved with deficiencies from the usual standards of the ordinance. In this case, there were several items noted in the CWA review, including the front setback on Coolidge, projections on Coolidge, and a deficient number of parking spaces that the Planning Commission would need to consider as part of this plan. PUDs must also meet three of the seven required public benefits included in this section of the zoning ordinance. The Carlyle-Wartman review includes a detailed analysis of each of those public benefits, and in some cases includes suggestions of how the applicant might consider better meeting that particular benefit. The Department of Public Works, the city's engineering consultant, HRC, and the Public Safety Department have all reviewed these plans and have no concerns with them moving forward and have recommended approval. There are some items noted in their review letters, but they are confident those would all be addressed on future submittals as this gets into a more detailed form, should it be eventually approved. The Carlyle-Wartman review also notes several items that should be addressed. The applicant did provide a response letter addressing those items specifically. You'll note that the responses in the applicant's response letter are in red. I will let Megan tech on anything that she would like to, and then the applicant has a presentation as well.
Thank you. Just wanted to add a couple of things in terms of the PUD that's before you. Number one, another deviation that they're asking for is in terms of use. The underlying, the current zoning district, Gateway Zoning, only allows multiple-family on upper-story residential. So with the idea that there's a first-floor residential, and it doesn't necessarily allow a parking as a primary use on the first floor. So because they, what their proposal is, is their first floor to be parking inside the building, and then the second and third floors to be residential. And so because of that, basically, the entire building, the primary use is multiple-family, that's another reason that they're asking for the planned unit development instead of asking for a, asking for a site plan review. In terms of what you should be looking at, one of the findings to look at is, is their landscaping sufficient? And actually, does it go above and beyond what you, what the ordinance requires? Your zoning ordinance has very few landscaping standards. In fact, it puts it all right in the Planning Commission's lap. However, what I would ask you to do is to think about other multiple-family buildings that you have approved in the past year or two, specifically the townhouses on Twelve Mile, and use that as a standard in comparing this. Also, you'll need to make a, to look at the parking carefully. They are asking for their, the equivalent of one-point-four spaces per unit. The ordinance requires two spaces per dwelling unit. Their building is mostly one-family and studio apartments that would likely generate closer to one-point-four parking spaces than two. But it's a, it's a deviation, then you should look at that and consider it and make findings on that. Also, your challenge, as Ms. Kapalansky said, is to really look at what those three recognizable benefits are, and those should be identified in any motion that you make if you're looking at recommending approval.
Thank you. And the applicant has a presentation for us as well, right?
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Wayne Wodeka. I am here representing WJ Ventures LLC this evening. We're here, obviously, to speak to you about a PUD this evening. I'm a Birmingham resident. I've been here doing business in the Berkeley, Oak Park, Huntington Woods community for thirty-one years. A little background on us before I go into just some comments. We own and operate a number of businesses in Berkeley and Huntington Woods, as well as Oak Park. We own and operate Huntington Cleaners at eleven in Coolidge. Our international headquarters for our franchise business is located at, between Cambridge and Harvard on Coolidge, CRDN. We recently bought Camelot Cleaners and the real estate on April of this, of this year. And recently, in the last fifteen years ago, I built five single-family homes around the corner of Henley and Catalpa that are a nice addition to the community. I've also served as the president of the Chamber of Commerce in the past and a former DDA member, board member as well, up until last year. And we've been fairly active, fairly active Berkeley, Huntington Woods, Oak Park supporter for numerous community benefit events. So all that to say, we've been, I think, a good part of this community. We additionally own the properties, a number of properties. Our headquarters, obviously, is directly north of the proposed site. We have the, we own the former La Selette Building, which is office building, which is directly across the street from the proposed project, as well as the corner of eleven in Coolidge. And we're building out a restaurant, a new restaurant in Oak Park, right off the corner of eleven in Coolidge today, which will open any day for, for a very good operator in the area. So as you can see, we're, we have a vested interest in this corridor, directly adjacent properties, directly across the street. We've been investing for over thirty-one, well, thirty-one years now. So it's in our best interest to propose a project that fits the community, where the community is going, and one that is, in our opinion, good sound judgment and good development with the benefits of the community at heart, and to, obviously, the neighboring properties and the residents in the immediate area. The duplexes that we are, we'd like to redevelop are eight years old, and frankly, the property's not being used, it's not achieving its highest and best use for the community or certainly for, for residents in the area. We feel with the master plan calling for, what the master plan is calling for is more multifamily and more housing options, and we think this project does just that. We watched carefully over the years, especially the last two years, two and a half years, as the city introduced and adopted a new master plan. You spent two-plus years painstakingly going through, visioning Berkeley forward and trying to determine the best and highest uses of the properties, the downtown, the downtown areas as well as residential areas, to come up with a plan that's progressive, yet meets the character and the community's needs within Berkeley. We were, we had a front-row seat to that throughout, and we commend the work that you did, because it's a big job of work, and it, I think, produced a great result. That said, our project fits perfectly within the new master plan. We are in the Gateway District. We are proposing housing, which the master plan calls for more housing currently. Today, Berkeley's residents, all the residents in Berkeley, seventy-three percent of the residents in Berkeley are single-family homes. The master plan calls specifically for more options along the lines of housing, and we feel that multifamily obviously achieves that. Of Berkeley's sixteen-hundred-and-fifty-six acres of land that encompass Berkeley, there are only six-point-six acres of vacant land available for development today. So in order to achieve the master plan and creating more housing options, one would have to assemble parcels together to create that option, and we've done exactly that. Since two thousand and six, we've been acquiring property in this area, along these duplexes, and we've operated them as duplexes since then. We believe what we've done is not only timely for Berkeley's master plan, but we really have created an option that, that gives you the ability to approve projects that you've asked for in your master plan. The deviation with the first-floor parking is as a result, the need for that is a result of the hardship that exists in the Coolidge corridor for anybody that's going to develop. Those lots were initially planted at one-hundred feet deep, and in order to build anything of scale, you have to go wide. And there are streets in the middle, right? So there are some streets, you can't go, you can't park across the street. So what we've done is proposed first-floor parking, and frankly, eighty percent of our parking will be under the building. So it's not as if we're going to have a big parking lot with, you know, light poles et cetera out there. So we think we've done, taken into account, calming the light pollution as well as noise pollution issues you'll, you'll hear about as we get into this a little further. So with that assemblage of property, everything is in place for this project. The utilities are there. The site work is basically balanced. The roads are in place for ingress and egress. In fact, our project will eliminate three curb cuts off of, active curb cuts off of Coolidge immediately and provide more parking on Coolidge if those curb cuts or those driveways are repurposed into parking, which ultimately leads to calming the traffic in this one-and-a-half-block area. So you'll eliminate three curb cuts and basically just have the two roads that are currently existing there. So the infrastructure lends itself well to what we're trying to do. We're meeting the height requirements as well, and we're installing onsite water retention under the parking lot in the exterior portion of the parking lot on the, on the east side of the property. So we'll contain our storm. We have a lot of detail around that. And the zoning's correct for what we'd like to do. So it seems to be a very straightforward project with a couple exceptions, and it fits with the city's direction. The reason we're seeking a PUD today is that, to the exceptions we are looking for, seem to fit perfectly in with where the city's direction is going, that of first-floor retail requirements and multi-family and parking. So we, we can build something there today. We could go ten feet up to the back of the property line and build something that would be frankly less attractive and not as community, appealing to the community. What we believe we've done is taken into account all the stakeholders, and we're fitting into exactly where the zoning requirements are going in Berkeley. Because as we've been, as been discussed with us, there are some tweaks to the parking requirements, because it's a dated, it's a dated model, and there's some consideration to be given to whether first-floor retail is even a viable development option today, given the retail environment in the real world. Okay? So, but all that to say, first and foremost, and regardless of our ability to build something there, we want to continue to be good neighbors, and we want to be, continue to be good corporate citizens, and continue to be good contributors toward the better, the betterment of Berkeley, which is specifically why I personally wrote letters to the immediate neighbors. I met with numerous neighbors one-on-one to solicit their feedback, and I've gotten some good feedback. I've gotten, received some concerns. We've tried to address those concerns best we can. We've presented to the Downtown Development Authority Board, received unanimous support from that body in a vote. We presented to the Berkeley Chamber of Commerce. We received very favorable comments there. We had some, some people concerned about it, which we understood. But it's important to remember that those, those two boards encompass a lot of residents of Berkeley. They're not just businesspeople on the DDA or in the, or on the Berkeley Chamber. They're also residents. It's my understanding that we received a number of letters in support that have been sent to your group, and we have tried to create a constructive dialogue throughout this entire project, from the city manager all the way through the residents, the business community, and all the stakeholders. So with that, you know, we're excited to present this project. We feel like it fits naturally and with the direction of Berkeley, although it may not feel natural today. But if you're moving Berkeley forward and you're trying to have some controlled development that takes into account the character of Berkeley, I think we've, we're meeting all those, those concerns, and we're open for suggestions. I think the first planning, informal planning meeting we had with you was, was very constructive, and we took a number of those comments to heart and incorporated those into our plans as well. With me tonight is Peter Stuhlreier, who's a principal of Design House Architects, as well as Joe Anderson, our senior project manager with Giffords and Webster. They're the project engineering firm that presented, put together all the site work for us. They're here to address specific questions you have, along with myself. And with that, I'd like to thank you for your time this evening, and also thank you for your service to the community of Berkeley.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So, before I open it up for Planning Commission to have questions, we're going to go questions, and then we'll do public comment. Instead of discussion and making a decision tonight, Instead of discussion and making a decision tonight, I think it is best, and after consultation with the city attorney, having a full board when making the decision on here is better, not only for the applicant, but for the residents as well, because the more eyes on it, the better represented everyone is. So, that's my thoughts going forward, unless somebody is really against that.
No.
Okay. Um, so, we will start with questions. Does anybody have any questions for staff or for the applicant?
But, I think, Megan, were you going to present something, or did I misunderstand?
Um, I, I mean, I gave a short, over, I, okay.
I didn't cut you off, did I? I'm sorry.
No, no, I mean, I, I could go through the letter piece by piece, if you wanted, but I know that you do your homework and that also, there's possibly that things might, anyway, if you'd like me to do that and clarify anything, I can. But, I think the main challenge in front of you is to look at landscaping, parking, those setback deviations and the use, and then identify the three recognizable benefits. And the one thing I will say on the landscaping, the applicant has made an offer for landscaping in the adjoining, single-family residential lots to screen them, to screen between the proposed wall and, and that, but, and the best vehicle for that would be a PUD agreement, which could come later in the process, or you could ask for a draft PUD agreement to be submitted. And that is a signed agreement between the city and the applicant, which documents different things that they're committing to, and then also on the city's end, if there's anything in terms of utilities and whatnot.
And I would recommend, if this were to move forward to City Council, that we would have that draft agreement in hand as part of the council packet.
Do we, have we had any contact with those, those neighbors where the landscaping would hap, because we're talking about it happening on their property, right? Do we, have we had any, has the city had communication?
The city has not.
Okay.
But I believe that the applicant may have.
Did, were they, um, in agreement to that, or were they resistant, or were they kind of, are you not sure yet?
I've spoken with two out of three. The middle resident has not met with me. I've proposed a green wall of their liking or choosing. I've gotten favorable reception to that, obviously with more detail to follow. It's also important to know that we're putting a pocket park on the property that is on the Columbia side as well, so it's a further green space there as well. So, we're proposing a pocket park, additional landscaping for that resident, and then along the whole back wall on their property line, we will install evergreen materials that the city obviously agrees to and, and the residents would like. We're confident it will enhance the look and provide a green wall screening that doesn't exist today, as well as just a buffer from the building. So, two out of three have, are warm to the idea. I did not ask anyone to sign an agreement. I just proposed it, and I want people to be able to think about it, go through this process, and then we'll come back with some drawings that hopefully are suitable.
Along the east side of the northern portion, is that a re, screen wall that's shown on there? Like, right up along, almost against the property line?
Yes.
Six-foot high? I didn't see it labeled. I don't, maybe I, perhaps I missed.
Six-foot is what we're expecting.
Okay.
For the setbacks, is this a six-point-one diagram that has, I guess, different setbacks noted for other properties down Coolidge? Is this, is this accurate, so that there's setbacks of zero feet, four feet, zero feet on other buildings?
So, if, that, if there was a revised packet and the, it's in, I believe, I think it's in green font, then that is what, that is what they're proposing. We didn't, weren't able to review that. That came after our review. But, you should note that the, the building's going to be up to the sidewalk. Anything that projects out, so balconies or whatnot, that's going to overhang, and based on your ordinance, then that does need a deviation. And then also, to the rear, there are, there's balconies proposed, but because those are eight feet up, that's an allowed projection, and so, it doesn't factor into the setback.
Well, yeah, so I'm, I know, I see on here, this building is noted as ten feet and five feet, but down Coolidge, there are other buildings just down the roadway with zero and four.
Yes.
I'm wondering if those are, so that's zero feet setback on a building down the street and four feet on another building down the street. So, this building would be further setback than those buildings?
Yes.
Okay. And then for the parking, I had noted, I know you said it was, I think I saw one-point-four-nine was proposed, which is under the two-space-per-unit ordinance currently, but there was, there was a reference to a possible one-point-two-five spaces per unit? Is that something that's been proposed in our amended zoning?
So, the zoning ordinance steering committee is actually discussing parking this, this coming month, and also did at the last meeting as well. I think there was a general agreement that the standard for multiple-family parking at two spaces per unit for every type of unit, whether it's studio, one-bedroom, or two-bedroom, was too high. They have not necessarily settled on a number yet, and they probably will get into that more closely in October. But, there was general consensus that that was too high.
Okay.
Parking is still intended to be assigned per apartment build, or apartment unit, right?
There will be assigned parking. If you have, certainly if you have more than one car, we'll be assigning parking for sure. In the building, there's enough parking under both footprints to accommodate the residents in that, that side of the building, so there's no one has, no one has to cross Columbia to get to their vehicle.
Right. So, it will all be assigned parking?
Yes.
Okay. And so, if it was a tandem, it would belong to one specific apartment, then?
Correct. Just like your driveways or house. Should we address the concern of the set, the front setback?
If you want to.
We did, I'd like Peter to address that, if that's permissible.
Well, yeah, just, just for clarifying, I, I think there was a miscommunication, because I wasn't talking about this building, the Columbia. What I was wondering is, based on the ten feet and five feet, that it would be setback. It seems like that's further than a lot of the buildings on Coolidge already.
That's, that is true. Peter Stuhlreier, Design House Architecture, thirty-three-hundred Auburn Road, Auburn Hills. I, I did this study, and yes, you're correct. A lot of times when we do these type of corridors, it's good to know the neighbors a few hundred feet both directions, to see that we're within the context, and maybe when there's higher buildings, that we're showing that we are increasing the streetscape width.
Kristen or Megan, this is a question for you. In the, in the paperwork, it's mentioned a few times that there's a thought about turning some of it into retail further on down the road. If it's approved as a PUD, would they have to go through the PUD process again to add the retail? How does that work?
So, if it's approved as a PUD and that portion continues as a PUD, I would say yes, the PUD would be amended. Do keep in mind that the ordinance is obviously going to be changing for this area. So, they could amend something to take out the PUD portion and come in with a site plan that meets requirements if the ordinance changes, so that they would meet the requirement.
Okay.
And correct me if I'm wrong, Megan, but I think that's...
That, that, I would agree with that. I think that's correct. I think the other option is for the applicant to, in a PUD agreement, say that on the first floor, that retail could be, happen under certain circumstances, and then what would likely need to happen is that somehow that parking would need to be accounted for, that would be displaced. So, if it was the desire to make it flexible in the future, so it didn't need to be a major amendment to the PUD by changing a use, then it could be added as a use that's in that quote-unquote PUD district. For instance, the PUD that exists right now up on Twelve Mile, where it's the multi-use building, that PUD agreement references a list of uses that are allowed to come in and out of that building. So, you could look at something along the same lines, or if it was chosen not to do that at that time, it would be likely a major amendment to the PUD.
Okay. Should we go through each point before the public comment? Because I have, I guess, highlighted some things.
So, so, as far as questions, or as far as like, so, I guess, what was recommended by the attorney, is that since there, I mean, since in order for this to move forward, we would all have to agree, and a PUD is much more flexible, and there's some opinions in there, as opposed to like, kind of a black and white site plan, is that to not get into those discussion points? So, if we're asking questions or clarifications, that's cool, but to save the discussion points for when we have a fuller board and we're moving towards making a decision.
Okay.
Does that sum it up correctly?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have any more questions before I open it to a public hearing?
Yeah, I had a question on, um, let me find here where I marked it. It was in reference to egress out of the parking lots, saying, I think there was a note somewhere about prohibition of east traffic to the neighborhoods. Is that true? I just, I wanted to figure that out. Let me, I'll find my highlighted reference. Or does that ring a bell?
Hi, Joe Anderson, Giffords Webster Engineers, the Site Civil for the applicant. I think we suggested that we could do that, but that would be under your direction and the city council's direction, if that's something that could be and wanted to be done. We were not opposed to restricting people in this complex from going down the residential streets if they needed to, coming out of. I think, I don't know that you could restrict them coming west and pulling in, but the way we have some of the one-way in and outs of the parking, it, it restricts the movements anyway, so that's just something that we suggested, I think, in our discussion session last time, that if you felt that way, we could go that way.
Are you proposing back-in?
I'm sorry?
Are you proposing back-in?
We were not proposing back-in spacing, no.
Like, C-six-hundred? Am I looking at this wrong? The arrows are going?
No, I just noticed that those arrows are the wrong way.
Okay.
This is a, this is a dated site plan that you're looking at. The current site plan shows angled parking under the building on the Columbia side, on the south side. So, if they could find the current version, I think it'll, I think it'll answer your question.
Okay. I think it's on, well, the one I'm looking at here, which was off our, it's on page eight of nineteen of the PDF. It's on the landscaping plan.
Parking on the, the main building, the larger buildings, be one-way in, you know, as you see the angles of the parking.
Yeah.
Two different directions for those. That, this is the current version.
Yeah.
So, there's no, so what page is that? I guess it, it's striped the same, it's just, it's, it doesn't have the arrows.
This is C-seven-hundred.
There's the, is it seven-hundred? This one. I'll show that to her.
So, the, the arrows are pointing that way, that's where they can usually back in, but they shouldn't be drawn this way, though.
And then this is another one. Okay, so then on, I guess my question was on A-one-point-zero, there's a note in the parking information that, I guess I just needed clarity on what that meant, if that was going to stay or not. I don't know, Kristen, if, it says no east turn on side streets.
So, that would be at the discretion of the applicant if they were willing, and the Planning Commission and Council if they requested that.
Okay.
It's an open item, as far as we're concerned, depending on what your choices are.
Okay.
The building goes right up to the sidewalk on Columbia, right? Where they're coming out for parking, from parking? So, there's going to be a wall right, right there. Have we looked at it from a pedestrian versus car sort of thing? Like, how far are they? One of my biggest complaints when I walked down Coolidge is that when cars are coming out of some of those parking lots or between buildings, they can't see the pedestrians. And pedestrians, it's not like a driveway where you can see them coming out back. Are we having that same issue with this? Did I make sense? Do you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, corner distance.
Oh, yeah, yeah, like a clear sight, yeah. And like mirrors, different, there's different techniques that could be put through there for the drivers, but, and this, is this, this parking's not gated, right?
No.
Okay.
So, it would be the same as any, it would be the same as in the downtown area where you have a zero setback, and you're at a corner, in that the two buildings would be coming close. And with the sidewalks being maintained, you would maintain that clear vision area. But, what usually happens, though, is that a car, in order to see what the traffic is, they'll have to pull up through, into the crosswalk at one point and block it.
Is there, I thought I saw in here, I know it's not gated, but is there like a lever controlling the parking, or is it just open?
No. I think that, I'll defer to the applicant after I state this, but I think the idea was that the road then functions, continues to function as a road, it just has the building can levered over, and that, that was looked at, instead of making a dead end on Columbia and walling the, it off completely from the rest of the, from, between the complex and the neighborhood, between the apartment buildings and the neighborhood.
And if we need to put a lever or some type of, you know, safety feature, then we're open to that. We think we're setback far enough, there are pedestrians who clearly have a sightline into the building to see vehicles, so you're not going to walk into a car. And vehicles pulling up will have enough of visibility to see laterally people coming or going. Obviously, that's a concern of ours. We, we feel like we've properly addressed it in the pedestrian walkway that's on one of the renderings that you do have. I don't know if you'd like to show that or not, but we think it accommodates safety first.
I guess I'm thinking about like, people walking to CVS and then back to their home on Columbia, so they're walking down Coolidge, and then they're turning on Columbia. How, how safe are those, you know?
The curb cuts are pretty far back from, the curb cuts are off of Coolidge considerably. When you look at the, the radius, we took, Joe, you took into account the setback where the cars are coming in and out, gives plenty of visibility, because they're one-way each driveway. So, we have the inbound traffic is on the, is it the eastern most, or western? Or me?
We can go back to one of the pages that shows the parking.
They're trying to find the rendering of that.
Well, so, on, they're coming out of the western portion of the building on the north side, you know, they're coming from, what is that, Cambridge, through into the parking, and then out onto Columbia, right there. That's really the only conflict point that would be, because the other drive for the main building is a one-way in, so everyone can see there. is a one-way in, so everyone can see there. The other parking area on the south side is an in and out with a wider driveway opening. And again, the buildings are set back at the right-of-way, not at the street. So, and the first floor can have some win, I don't want to say windows, but openings to not wall off completely so both vehicles and pedestrians can see each other coming out of that. But like was mentioned, it's a fairly typical urban type situation.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Can I ask the engineer a question?
Sure.
What's the width of the sidewalk on Coolidge there?
On Coolidge, I believe from back of curb to the property line, I believe it's ten or twelve feet. And then we're set back a little bit further than that for the building. Because there's some green space in there with a couple little areas for benches and things.
Thank you.
On the, the, there's like pillars, I think, as part of the bridge. And those are right through the sidewalk. Is there enough space, like a four-foot minimum for any type of wheelchair or ADA access between the building and the pillar or from the pillar to the curb? You have to really zoom in to see it.
That comment did come up before and we kept, I think, seven feet.
Okay.
On the, on the public sidewalk side. And then of course, you can walk on the inside of the column as well, so.
Right, okay.
And just to address another comment, the, the walls going east and west along Columbia are not necessarily solid walls. We don't, we just need columns. So you may not be coming through a little portal with the car when you leave the parking. You may be coming, maybe just driving right out. You could, in other words, you have much broader view angle than, than you might think.
The, the piggyback on Joe's comment though, if you blow that up until that, where those four columns are. Those are the two right there.
Yeah, there's two, and then there's two.
You're saying there's seven feet between the back of curb? Or there's seven foot between the outside edge of the column and the, either the building or the, the back of curb?
Well, without a scale on it, I can't tell you for sure, but I know that it's more than five.
And for a point of clarification, the ADA requires three feet.
That is true, with a passing, well, a certain distance and passing, true.
I suspect that that question might come up again, so it'd be good to know the exact number. All right, anything else before I open public comment? Okay, I am going to open public comment at seven fifty-three. And once again, come up to the microphone, state your name, you'll have three minutes. And we will be noting your concerns. Does anybody like to comment on this?
Hello.
Hi.
Michael Murphy, two four two seven Columbia. At Second House, east off Coolidge on the south side. Some of my main concerns on this is that basically, it's the traffic coming down Columbia going east. Is there any possibility of dead-ending that there? How high is the building? My other concern is on both sides. You have balconies in the back where people are just kind of looking right in the backyards. I don't know if that can be addressed or fixed so that we have a little bit more privacy. The other thing is these units will get visitors, where are they going to park? Because I can see that a lot of times people just parking in front of our houses and scooting off in there and they'll be leaving those cars there overnight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anne Hornsby. I'm the one that's going to be siding to this parking lot and being in a fishbowl with all the balconies coming, looking down. Do we have, I know the units are going to be six hundred, seven hundred square feet. Do we know what, what rental amounts they're going to be asking for these units? Are they going to be luxury? Are they going to be low income?
So this is the point where you just make comments and we, we don't engage with you, but we'll note these and we'll try and address them.
Okay, well, I submitted my opposition to this because there's no amount of buffering or landscaping that's going to affect my, that's going to help my property because it's right there. So I, that's what I would like to know.
You would like to know about the landscaping or you would like to know?
Well, the landscaping, certainly. But as Michael said, the, the parking, everyone's going to be parking on our street. They're going to be walking up and down the street, the congestion is going to be terrible. And there are small children around, the traffic's going to be heavier. And look what Coolidge is like now since they compressed it and put in bike lanes. You can't even hardly get down into Coolidge. It's a bumper-to-bumper kind of traffic congestion now, just going one mile. And the pedestrian effect is important. Because it will, this, we already have another apartment complex in, under construction now over by the old Catholic school. That's going to bring in a lot more traffic. Now this is going to bring in a lot more traffic. Is that really what Berkeley needs is more congestion and more traffic? To increase the bottom line? Because I know my property value is not going to increase with this development. And neither are the ones that are going to be near this development. So that is my concern. What's going to be done to protect my bottom line? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah, Frank at two four one four Princeton Road. Some observations, mentioned previously, traffic, it's insane. You can't even get out of there off Princeton Road or Columbia to get in or out. It's very, very difficult with CVS, Durst Lumber, MSU Federal Credit Union and the rest of the restaurants that are across the street. You almost have to, I have to go the opposite direction to like get out. Main concern of mine also is, I have a two-year-old that's like three or four houses down. All these cars coming in and out with these additional units, it's not going to be a place where I'm really going to want to live, to be, to be honest. The, the light pollution, the noise pollution, the car pollution. I just don't think it's safe. Not to mention the amount of outages that we've had on these streets over the past few months have been, I think, outrageous. And what kind of pressures it's going to put on the power supplier, the electrical grid adding these units in. I'm sure it will be addressed, but that's a main concern of mine as well. Trash, there's a lot of trash that comes from, you know, Coolidge Highway. And how much more will be there, will be there now. I don't even live adjacent to this, but I would not want to live in a house that is only, you know, the difference between this PUD and my house as a vinyl fence, I think is offensive. Thank you.
Thank you.
I am Bill Maher, two three one three Cambridge. I have a interesting or different perspective, being a block off of Coolidge. I'm a block east of Coolidge. I've been a resident of Berkeley for thirty-six years. We have, my wife and I have definitely seen families grow, leave, grow again, move in and out. I'm here to support, you know, my friends, people that I know on Princeton and on Cam, or on Columbia. And I too am concerned with the amount of traffic that goes through this neighborhood, it's crazy. Frank alluded to the traffic from Durst, the credit union, CBS. A lot of people don't take into account from August to June, Berkeley High School traffic coming from inbound and outbound traffic, coming in from Huntington Woods, Berkeley, et cetera. I live at the corner of Cambridge and Berkeley. It's ridiculous. If you want to see how ridiculous it is, stop by my house in the morning. I'll make you breakfast. We can sit on my deck, you can watch this. And think it just with this development here, in conjunction with the current rate of traffic, I just don't think it's a good blend for this corner of Berkeley. And I really honestly believe that a closer look needs to be taken as to how to best manage traffic in this corner, in this area moving forward. If you want an early dinner, come by my house at three forty, three thirty. We can watch the traffic leave Berkeley High School. It's ridiculous, the speeds are ridiculous. So I think there's a bottleneck here with traffic flow that needs to be addressed. Because I'm here to support the, the people that I know on Princeton and Columbia. Please listen to them, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Town Mayor, thirty-one twenty-six Catalpa. I just wanted to lend some support to some of my other neighbors, even though I live, you know, half mile or so away from them. Just with the traffic concerns, not so much with the previous town I was speaking about with the vehicle traffic, but also I wanted to bring into fact that as living on a main, on Catalpa, we all know about school traffic. I live right across from the middle school, so I know all about, you know, people coming and going. And, but what I'm worried about is also the, the walking traffic from both those schools is quite heavy. And I usually am floating around to or from work and I kind of see that. So, you know, the, the amount of traffic walking down Catalpa as well as all these cars, if they're congested and pulling out, could also provide a safety concern which maybe they can address for, you know, especially the high school students that are all, you know, kind of coming out and then walking down that way as well. I don't know if it was addressed in the package yet, I, I have not reviewed all the literature, so. If it's in there, that's fine, if not, I'd like it to be addressed. Is, once again, the, the demographics of, you know, what's going on with this? Are they all six hundred square foot, you know? Whether they're luxury or not, it's six hundred square feet is a single person dwelling, maybe two people if they're, you know, a couple or something like that. But are they all small apartments? You know, what, what percentage of them are for low rent housing, you know, things of that nature? You know, what are we, what are we gaining as a community? We're certainly, you know, duplex usually has a couple sides to it with multiple bedrooms and, you know, people can take up a side of that as a family. But on the flip side of that, if we're just, you know, creating just like an income trail where we have fifty single people, you know, running out apartments just to make, you know, a ton of money on a very small parcel of land, that's a different story. So I'd like that to be clarified for the public as well. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Michael Sher, I'm twenty-four forty-five Columbia, I live right next door to the project.
Can you speak up just a little bit?
It's Michael Sher, twenty-four forty-five Columbia, right, I live right next door to the, the project. And I, I, I'm supportive, it's just, the only concern is the traffic and the, and that's the parking mostly, that's all.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Going once? Going twice? All right. Head out a number of emails. How in-depth do I have to go in?
So I would note maybe the name, whether they're for or against.
Okay.
And then if there's specific questions that you want us to address here that other people might be interested in, we'd be happy to do that. When I scanned through, I didn't see a whole lot of questions that weren't already mentioned, but...
Right. That means I have to butcher people's names. We'll just say this one's for Mr. Kebab, who is in support of it. Christine Gross, Katie Kutschner, Terry Fouts are in support. Chris Riley has concerns about city services, also about the DDA getting the tax revenue from this and traffic. Lynn Murphy spoke to her neighbors, mixed reviews, but has concerns, parking. Also mentions a dead-end street. And the balconies. Ashley Redente lives on Columbia, concerns with the development. Parking. Doesn't seem to love the bridge, the part that spans over Columbia. And feels that it's large and imposing. Laura Garman, absolutely against the bridge being built over Columbia. Anne Hornsby, who we heard from earlier. I think she summed up in her comments, the email. And Brian Zifkin, who is in favor.
There were also, um...
And there were ones in the packet as well. Darlene Rothman believes it's a fantastic concept. Hassan Sala is in support of it. Jay Richard and Jack Kaufman, who are accountants for Huntington Cleaners, are in support of it. Jennifer Budzinski is in support of it. Another one for Mr. Kebab, from Nasgully. Also believes that it goes with a master plan and downtown revitalization is in favor of it. Rob Onasco is in support of the development. And Dr. Sarah Kirsch is also in support of it. And with that, I will close the public hearing at eight oh nine. All right, so let me see if I can sum up some of these questions. Traffic seems to be the biggest concern of people. Okay, can I ask you about parking, visitor parking?
So in my experience, the parking at 1.25 for a primarily single bedroom unit complex is sufficient. We're proposing 1.49. We did not take the bonus for bicycles. And we did not include any of the street parking, I'm not talking the Coolidge street parking, into any of those calculations. So what my thoughts are, what my opinion would be, is that we will have additional parking in the parking lot privately for guests to some degree. And we also have the Coolidge street parking, which should be, you know, I don't know what the manual says visitors quantities are, but it's adequate.
So on Coolidge, there's no parking between 2:00 and 6:00 a.m.
Understood.
So is there a plan for if there's going to be an overnight guest? I mean, I see that there's a number of parking lots available to direct visitor parking to. Is there a plan for that or signage for that? Or anything that shows that's how, that's where visitors should be parking if they're going to be parking?
In the case that there's some sort of overnight guest that is, that can be accommodated for through management, ownership controls several parking lots adjacent and across the street to accommodate for that. So that's... I still think that we have spaces available underneath the building.
Okay.
Based on the quantities.
And then since those would be, since your parking spaces are marked, that would be guest parking in one of those spots?
They would be.
Okay.
Yeah, and for clarity on the math, it's 57 units, assuming one parking spot per unit is assigned and there's 80 spots on the property. Is that about right?
That's correct. The parking spots would be assigned by the building management. So there wouldn't, if you had one car, you'd have one spot. And if you had a couple living together, you'd have two spots.
Oh yeah, if you needed two spots.
Assigned, right.
Yeah, yeah, so there's 20... I'm just trying to like do the math.
But there's also some of those tandem spots. So they're not like two... You could only have them if you were in the same apartment.
Yeah, so a second spot will be a premium to some of the units at some point. And then they'll run out essentially?
With all one bedroom and studios, I don't think we're going to run out.
Okay. From an assigned standpoint?
From an assigned, no, right.
Electrical grid or city services. I see those a lot.
Trash would be also mentioned in that too.
Is there a dumpster somewhere in here? I meant, that was one of my earlier questions.
It's integral to the building. And so there's two chutes going down, one for recycling, one for trash. And it's on the northern side of the building. And then it would be screened from that area. So...
I don't suspect that it's adding to the electrical grid in a way that would be detrimental to the rest of the neighborhood.
We haven't gotten any comments from DTE. We usually wouldn't. That would be exclusively a DTE function. I can speak to some of the city utilities. So the Department of Public Services did review this in detail. They're of the opinion that this will improve stormwater in the area because the sites currently do not have any detention at all. So this would provide detention for these particular properties. The applicant, the Department of Public Services or Public Works requested, and the applicant also agreed to do some lining and replacement of the water main and sewer that would go underneath of the proposed bridge. So they see that as an improvement as well.
Okay. Thank you.
And also that there's enough capacity in both the sewer and water to accommodate this project.
Thank you. I think the one I saw or I heard and read maybe the most about is traffic. And we can probably have a conversation about minimizing the turning out of the apartments down Columbia. We did that with Aqua Tots. I go to Aqua Tots with my daughter, but I live like a street and a half down from Turning Right, and it's really annoying because I'm like, but I live right here. You're protecting me from myself. So I understand that desire to try and keep traffic off of that street. I don't know that it always plays out as you want it to, right? Because you're still going to have traffic turning in from Coolidge. Who's going to be the one making sure they don't actually turn? We could create things to make it harder. I think that's a discussion we can probably mull over and think more about for the next meeting.
Yeah, I had noted there's kind of grouping of concerns regarding privacy, height of the buildings, and the scale.
Right.
I believe from Megan's review that these are all met per ordinance on any building that would go in this location. So from that standpoint, it's code, the way I'm understanding, the three and a half stories. So the scale of the building, the height, everything is met per ordinance.
It's met per ordinance. But you could ask the applicant to deal with those privacy issues that have been brought up by the public. One of those would be eliminating the balconies. The flip side of that is that you eliminate some outdoor space for those residents of the building. There, I believe, was balconies on the rooftop where it steps back. And those were mostly available, I don't, they seemed to be available to those units up there. Those could become a public space and some buildings do allow that. That would have to have a different... You would have to figure out the internal circulation in terms of staircases or staircases to get there. But, and they're also providing some green space for the southernmost building in that pocket park that also can satisfy that. So if you feel really strongly that the balconies wouldn't be appropriate because they would have an issue with privacy for the residents, that's something that you could definitely ask the applicant to consider or you could make it a condition that those are not there. I just, there's pluses and minuses to that in terms of outdoor space for the residents that are proposed. And, but that privacy is something you should consider.
As far as the height, it is, it does meet the ordinance. It's, the allowable height is 40 along Coolidge. Most of our buildings are not that high, so when you see one that's 40, it feels ginormous, admittedly. But that, that part is within our zoning ordinance.
Wasn't there something in the master plan though, when we talked about Greenfield, that it should step down or be more in character as you're on the residential side? That it should more in character of the residential houses there?
I mean, so yes, for that kind of vision where you were taking like a whole block to block, right, between streets where you'd had your intensive use there, I don't think this falls under that same idea. But our downtown master plan does say, talk about stepping down as we get towards residential. And having a healthy landscaped buffer between...
Just to, I don't want to have to interrupt and I apologize. On the height, it's only, it's only 40 in the middle of the building at the peak of the sloping metal detail. So it does pitch downwards towards residential. And it's more like 30 on the two sides. So, and then it bumps up in the middle. So we kind of addressed that. And on the privacy thing, the third floor rear facing, neighborhood facing balconies are not balconies. Those are, we call them Juliette balconies, but they're just glass doors that open. So that kind of, you know, you don't go outside. You have just a window. You'd have the window anyway. So just floor to ceiling window on the third floor. And I don't know, Kristen, if we can show a view. Did you get the views from Columbia? They might have been after the... Maybe a page before that. No?
I think they're all in the same thing. Columbia, this one right here.
Oh, that little tiny view? The, yeah, Cambridge Columbia view. Those two. And those are, those are superimposed with the actual landscape size and shape. So really imposing downward views into the neighborhood are not really happening.
On the lighting side, I think it's, photometric shows everything was spot on. Regarding the group of comments and concerns for rental prices and demographics and the property values, I don't think we get too much into that, right? As far as, that's not part of the ordinance for us to dictate those items.
Right. And I've read numerous articles in both directions. Some people will say that new development like raises the price of your home. There are articles that says that it doesn't. I've seen nothing that like definitively says one way or the other. It really is a whole lot of opinion and not a whole lot of like scientific settled fact. The reality is, they're not, you're not getting a subsidy for, to offer Section 8 or anything like that. Everybody wants to live in Berkeley. I'm imagining almost every developer is trying to get the most money they can get out of these things. And they will probably be at a price where I will read on the Facebooks, people going, I can't believe they're charging that much for an apartment. Sure.
It's a great question and we've been hearing a lot of it. The current rental rate, the units are anywhere from 600 feet to about 1,200 feet. So they're not small 600, you know, they're not all 600 foot units. The average rent of the Ivy currently is at $2.06 a square foot per month. So that puts, if that's our market rate two years from now or whenever we're done, if that's the rate, we would average anywhere from $1,600 to $2,600 a unit per month. So it's not subsidized. We're not asking for subsidies to build Section 8. It's privately funded. And we have to build a development that, this is a very expensive building to build, taking into account the things where we're putting in the character and design, the finishes, the style of the units, the bridge. There's a, this is a big construction project. So we're not going to low income this project. That's not why we're doing this. And as I said, we own as much, if not more, property in the direct immediate area than anyone. So anything we do is going to have a direct impact on us. And we're the developer and we will be the owners. Okay? So it's not low income.
Thank you.
And then regarding, I think we talked about this at the sketch plan, DPW commenting on dead ending the street. Didn't that come up? Because there's a couple of comments about that as an idea, right?
I'm not, I don't recall if it came up specifically during the sketch plan conversation, but we did have that conversation with DPW and with Public Safety. And both of those departments were opposed with dead ending the street.
Sorry. Any other questions that don't get into deliberation?
I guess the only one item Megan mentioned was, is this the appropriate time for discussion on the recognizable benefits? Or should we wait till we have full?
We should probably wait until we have full.
Okay.
Unless it is maybe something that is in the packet, right? Like if there's some comment that was made in there that you need clarification on?
No, I don't.
All right. Would anybody like to make a motion then to postpone it till the October meeting?
I would just suggest the motion just be made as a general postponement.
Okay, as a general postponement then.
I'll make a motion to postpone.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Do we have to roll call that?
Yes, I can do that.
Okay.
Commissioner Staff?
Yes.
Commissioner Bardis?
Yes.
Commissioner Dolan?
Yes.
Chair Cepner?
Yes.
Motion passes forward to zero.
So we will see this again. There will not however be another public hearing because we have held our public hearing. If anybody would like to come to that next meeting and be heard again, there will be time for public comments then as well. Something else popped into your head? If you have another question, you are also welcome to reach out to the Community Development Director if you have a question that she can maybe answer for you as well. Thank you guys for your time. Thank you for coming. Now we move on to the Community Development 2223 Annual Report.
Someone wants to hear the last item?
I know, we are not interesting.
So not too much to share here. The state of Michigan requires that the Planning Commission file an annual report every year with the City Council. The city has traditionally expanded this to include the whole Community Development Department. So it's just a compilation of our activities in the fiscal year 2223. There were a number of ordinance amendments that were instituted. So thanks, thank you to this body for their work on that. And we look forward to working this coming year on the continued zoning ordinance update. And we have a number of other projects we're going to be tackling as well. I'm happy to answer any questions. The commission is asked to accept this report this evening and then I would take it forward to the council.
So that is just a motion to accept this?
Yep, accept is fine.
Okay. Anyone? Anyone?
Hold on, I want to find the real name of it. Oh, I guess right here, yeah. A motion to accept the 2223 Annual Report and the 2324 Work Plan.
Support.
Do we need to roll call this? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It is accepted. Committee liaisons.
So we postponed this at the last meeting because we were short a few people.
Way back ago.
It's up to the commission whether they want to kick this to the October meeting for the same reason.
I have a question about the environmental.
Yeah.
Because I was under the impression that it's the third Thursday of the month and I've gone twice and it's, nobody's there, so I actually looked it up. And it's on the calendar for the third Tuesday. So do you know if it changed times or?
Not that I know, but I'll double check.
Okay.
That was the one I was gonna, if I had to pick one. If it was Thursday, if it was Thursday.
It's really interesting.
Sending you on a wild goose chase.
Yeah, I had noted the third Thursday as well, so I'll see if they changed.
Yeah. Well, I can do the third, well, yeah, the Thursdays work better for me.
Somebody said they could take the DDA, but I have not seen anybody else at the DDA, so I just keep going.
It was Mike Woods who had volunteered to take the DDA and he can no longer do that.
Yeah.
He let me know.
So I know it's generally traditionally filled by the chair to be the City Council. I watch them from home, but if there's anybody else who goes to almost every City Council meeting that would like to be the liaison to City Council, I'm not opposed.
Yep, no problem.
All right. So the one...
So the one body that was really wanting a representative was the Chamber. And we are down three members this evening, so maybe if nobody here wants to volunteer for that, we could look at that at the next meeting.
Those are during the day, aren't they?
No, com-
Oh, it's an evening.
Yeah, that's in the evening. The DDA is in the morning, which is why I seem to always keep taking it.
Yeah.
Let's postpone.
Yeah, I mean, like, you know.
What day, what day of the week is it?
The Chamber meets the third Tuesday at 6:00 at the library.
Yeah, Tuesdays are tough.
I know, because this is Tuesday.
So mull it over, so downtown's, the DDA is taken care of and City Council's taken care of, it's a couple more options for people to think about.
So would you like me on the next agenda to add Chamber Environmental and ZBA?
Yes.
Okay.
Let's just chip away while we get them.
Baby steps. We'll get it.
Soon as someone even says "yeah," we'll put them down as yes. All right, liaison reports.
I keep missing them, because I'm going on the wrong day apparently.
I'll talk about the DDA. They looked at some murals, um, they have, they're already looking at where they're, like, how much money they have left for facade improvement grants and mural grants, because they're, they're, a lot of businesses are starting to take them up on that, which is awesome. There's a continuing conversation about opening up the crosswalks, and, uh, so it's still on hold, although I think they got some bids on doing the work that were more acceptable, like bump outs and stuff, to make it, um, to make those lights closer so that cars can see them better than they do now. And it's Boogly. You'll see skeletons all over the place. On October 1st, at Allman's Health and Beauty, we're having a DIY skeleton decorating party. So if you've gotten a skeleton from us and you don't know what to do with it, come on October 1st, we're going to have some supplies and, ooh, these wonderful tea, and we're going to hang out and make skeletons creepy or funky or whatever. On October 12th, there's Witch's Night Out, there'll be a trolley, free witches' hats, and a number of businesses will have specials. We will get the sign up soon for our Ghost Chase, which is a mix between a scavenger hunt, amazing race, and a road rally on foot through the downtown. There'll be cash prizes, it's super fun, teams of four do this, you'll all have to dress up, and it's an awesome night to be around in downtown Berkeley. And then the 28th will be trick-or-treating in the downtown, and our Monster Mash Black Party on Coolidge from Catalpa to 12 Mile. So it's a super busy month full of all kinds of awesome spooky wonderful goodness, and get out there, enjoy it. Okay. Staff comments?
I will just note that the August and September zoning ordinance steering committee updates are in your packet. That information is always available to you on the Google Drive, you can see everything that the zoning ordinance steering committee is looking at. As I mentioned, this month, next week, we're going to be tackling parking. So we got into some of that discussion last month. We're going to get into the specific text this month. If you have any comments or anything, you can email me, and I will pass them along to the committee members.
Thank you. Do you have anything you want to add?
No, just also, we'll talk a little bit about signs.
Yeah.
I was almost going to break into song, but I'm not going to. Do you have anything for us?
Pertaining to this, we did have our, council had our second reading and adoption of an ordinance update to ban the retail pet store, preventing any additional stores from selling dogs, cats, and rabbits. JC Park was renamed to Bacon Park, so now we have Bacon Park again, and we had our ribbon cutting for that inclusive park over there. We also granted two 180-day extensions for the Marijuana Provisioning Centers, Seven Point and Yellow Tail.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, if that's, if that's it, I will need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
So, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting is adjourned.
Not the same excitement.
I know.